Buy probably by, uh, Mastro's and...
Is it down by that? It's in a big, I think it's in a big building. I'm so bad, I literally should have a drive-by. I mean, my sense of direction...
Or you need a test on the scope.
Are you ready?
For an answer. Hey, Michael.
My sense of direction.
Have you come up with an answer for my question yet?
You know, things, you know, if they give us, you save that money, Burton, Aaron will do that.
I'm trying to advise Andy right.
And then you park. My question is, am I like parking? I don't have parking.
There's a bunch of public lots right there as well, too, so.
That's good. That's good.
It's a club?
It's a private club. He said he wanted one.
Yeah.
Running out of scrap.
They're still there.
Yeah. Is it a club yet?
No, I haven't.
Really? We're all members, we should take...
I mean, Tommy gets the VIP member back in the day, you know, when Dan said, like, the VIP stuff.
Well, come on in, we'll get you a membership.
Mike, can I eat there, like, a lot?
Yeah, he knows the owner.
Okay, okay. I am calling the meeting to order. Do you want to do a roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Cardenas.
President.
Commissioner Sue.
President.
Commissioner Douglas.
Here.
Vice Chair Kurt Patrick. And Chair Chelf.
Here, thank you. Okay, who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Approve order of the agenda, I approve it, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. Blue folder items, we had a couple of supplemental letters. Do we need to do anything more than just make people...
Receive and file, motion to receive and file.
Receive and file, thank you. Are there public comments on non-agenda items? I see none, so we'll keep moving. Consent calendar, 7A, approval affidavit of posting for the Planning Commission regular meeting of August 19th, 2025. And 7D, approval for the minutes for July 24th and 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve both items.
Great, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. Calendar items, I see none. Okay, public hearings items continued from previous meeting. This is 9A zoning case number 25-033. One Hackamore Road. Please give us an overview.
Alrighty. Good evening, honorable commissioners. I'm here to present zoning case number 25-033. This is for the subject property located at 1 Hackamore Road. And yes, this project was continued from the July 24th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. A little bit of background, it is located in the RES 1 zone. The net lot area is 1.8 acres, it's 40,070 square feet. So, the lot is really small, the smaller lot. And it actually has the 50-foot front setback for the residence on the East Field, I mean, on Hackamore. And then there's also, what you want to call it, the setbacks and easements on East Field as well. So, it's currently developed with the main residence, attached garage, swimming pool, pool equipment, shed, outdoor kitchen, and it currently has a 915-square-foot corral. And like I said, the project is located in the RES 1 zone. It is on the corner of Hackamore and East Field Drive. Here's a summary of some of the approvals that were needed. There were some changes. The reason why this project was continued from July 24th was because the applicants had requested more time to revise the plans and address some of the view obstruction issues. There were some letters that were sent in and from the previous month. 6 Hackamore, there was a view obstruction from 6 Hackamore. So, what the applicants did, they went in and made some revisions to the plans and the project. So, it does require a site plan review. The first proposal for the site plan review was for a 20-foot stable. They did reduce the stable height by one foot, bringing it down to 19 feet. Since they, since the project did require more grading, the original grading for the project was 604 cubic yards, it did increase up to 14 cubic yards of non-exempt grading. The retaining walls are located in the rear of the back of the stable, those are the same. The building pad, they were expanding the building pad. Then they actually lowered the building pad by 24 inches. There's a conditional use permit requested for any stables that are greater than 200 square feet. The stable height here was 20 feet, which again, it was reduced to 19 feet. And also, the stable, the square footage did reduce. The original proposal was 2,093 square feet with a hayloft intact room. The size has been reduced to 1,859 square feet. Now, as for the variances, since it is a smaller lot and it is sloped and the buildable pad area is limited, it does exceed the maximum disturbance of 40%. So, that's why they were requesting a variance. And also, one of the reasons why the project was renoticed was because, doing some research in the code, staff found out that an accessory structure requires a 50-foot setback. So, although it is a smaller-sized lot, the setback for the 50-foot setback only applies to the main residence. It does not apply for the actual stable. So, the stable requires a 50-foot setback. Therefore, staff renoticed the project and requested an additional variance for the stable to encroach into the front yard setback. Here is the new stable height, this is the east elevation. Maximum stable height will be 19 feet and the stable size is 1,859 square feet. So, these were the project concerns that came up from the 7/24 meeting. I don't know if I need, I think we did receive an email from Greg Noel. He did come in and look at the plans on July 15th. So, those blue, the copy of his email was placed into the blue folder item for that meeting on July 24th. And then, this is when the applicants came into the city to address the view obstructions and they were proposing to redesign the plans. So, we did receive a public comment, it was actually an email that was sent from on... Okay, so there's two, the first, first, in your blue folders, there is a email from Mr. Greg Noel. That's going to be in your supplemental blue folders. And then also, on August 16th, we received an email from Bert Balk. He's a resident at 6 Hackamore Road. He sent an email regarding the view obstruction. And this is the picture that was actually attached in the email. This is from the office window. And in the email, he says that, see, here's the outline of the silhouette of the proposed stable. And then, he blackened out here what would be the view that would be obstructed here. He says it's about 75%. So, this is the view, this is the silhouette, and then this here is the view obstruction. And this is looking out from the window of 6 Hackamore. So, we were considering some redesigned concepts. This is the original outline of the barn. And this is the new design of the barn, the stable. It's been shifted nine feet and four inches into the slope. And it was discussed this morning at the meeting, at the field trip meeting, that possibly shifting the barn into the rear setback here would probably resolve some of the view issues from the neighbors. So, that was something that we're taking into consideration tonight, is possibly shifting this barn. It would, we would possibly relocate the existing corral to the front setback and then shift this barn into the rear setback. So, here are the requirements for stables with the conditional use permit and anything over 200 square feet. Right here, it says that the stable shall not be permitted in the front yard and shall not be no less than 25 feet from the side property line in the RES 1 zone. And this is the RES 1 zone, no less than 35 feet from the side property line in RES 2 zone. And then here, no less than 25 feet from the side roadway easement line and from the rear property line. So, this code, we should be able to ship that stable into the rear setback. But not into, with that, not within the 25 feet, though. So, there's a 50-foot setback, so they could shift it in, you know, 25 feet. So, this morning, at the field trip meeting, all the commissioners were present. 6 Hackamore Road, this is Bert Balk. Once again, you know, in his letter, he expressed his concerns about, you know, the stable blocking his view. And it was also discussed at the meeting that, you know, possibly shifting the barn back. We also, the planning commissioner staff and all of the attendees walked over to 6 Hackamore. We went inside the residence and we viewed the stable across the street. And staff, you know, we were able to view the stable from the window. We could see that it did obstruct their view. The resident at 53 East Field Drive, they had no concerns with the stable, but he did have some concerns regarding his privacy. So, staff will condition that there will be a landscape buffer between the stable, the rear of the stable, and 53 East Field. For Hackamore, the residents were not sure about the view obstruction of the stable. So, the planning commissioner's staff and attendees, we all walked over to 4 Hackamore to view the obstruction from the inside of their living room. And as we could see, there were no view obstructions of the stable. We were there to look at the stable, to see if we could see the silhouette of the stable from the residents. And we did not see the silhouette of the stable from 4 Hackamore. So, at the morning field trip discussion, these are the things that we were discussing, shifting the barn into 25 feet into the rear setback, relocating the corral into this front setback. Also, discussing if the project will need to be silhouetted and restaked for the next meeting and any additional variances that will need to be granted for the project if it is shifted into the rear setback. There's also going to be a traffic commission review. The first proposal, there's like an existing driveway here, driveway access, because there is an existing corral here now. So, because of shifting the barn, the stable, they've relocated, and this would be a drive, just a DG pathway, but it doesn't require traffic engineer review, but it will still require a traffic commission review. So, that is one of the conditions in the resolution, that this project will be reviewed for this DG driveway. So, it's been changed, it was wider here and this is existing access. And then, it's just relocated here, so it's a different access. This project is categorically exempt pursuant to the SEQA Section 15303, new construction of single-family residence and accessory structures. So, our recommendation is to open the public hearing, take public testimony, and then provide direction to staff and the applicants. And if there are any questions, staff is here to answer any questions as well as the applicant and the property owners.
Great, thank you very much, very thorough overview. Any questions at this point?
You mentioned 50 feet originally, and then I didn't see any 50 feet, 50-foot setback. I thought before the initial...
Yeah, we had...
What's the difference between, you're commenting 50 feet, but there was nothing in here for 50 feet?
Okay, because, well, that was part of the variance, was for them to encroach into the 50-foot front... That was part of the variance for them to encroach 50 feet into the front setback. That's for the barn.
Okay, any other questions? I haven't opened it up to the public yet. I'll do that in a minute, I'll give everybody a chance to speak. Yeah.
Real quick, just to kind of summarize the changes from the last presentation, they dropped the height three feet.
One foot for the stable height.
Well, no, because they reduced the building pad two feet, so three feet and reduced total height.
Is that right?
Okay.
Reduced the size of the barn roughly 200 square feet and pushed it back into the hillside nine-plus feet. I just want to make sure that that was, that was clear. I heard that this morning and it seemed significant.
Okay.
Okay, at this point in time, I'm going to open it up to the audience. If you'd like to speak, please come up, state your name. We'll give everybody a chance to speak. Okay, you've got it, guys. You want to speak, come up one at a time, introduce yourself into the microphone so they can get it into the record. We'll let everybody talk.
I'm Bert Balk at 6 Hackamore. And I'm sorry, we've been trying to work on what kind of modifications could make it move out of our view. And today, this morning, I was just really hoping that we could move the building into the setback in the back of the property. The very large 50-foot setback makes it really hard to build anything there without scrunching it up into our view. And I asked Ben, the architect, and said that if it moves back, can it move down as well? Because the driveway would continue down, it doesn't have to get steeper if the building moves back. And he estimated maybe he could get, if it could move back 15 feet from where it is right now, it could sink three feet. We walked over and we set up some stakes so that we could see what that would do to change the view, and it does move it kind of out of our view. We get most of the bay back, we get most of the coastline going down to forever, it goes down to San Clemente, actually. We get most of that view back, if it could just move back in the setback. So, I was just wondering if I can ask that we could have, that they could have a variance to move into the setback, the back one. That's it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ben Cawthon, thank you, everybody, for this morning's time. We actually spent quite a bit of time after as well, working with the neighbors, viewing the views from their house and trying to work out a solution to this. I believe this structure is seated well in the lot. I don't believe that the view impacts are that great, but the owners are very willing to make a compromise to push this building further into the setback. And we did actually, they went and visited with the neighbors to our south with the Myers to make sure that it wouldn't be a privacy issue for them, because we already heard that he had that concern. They went and viewed it and he doesn't have that concern. So, luckily, they were both okay with the structure being pushed into the setback to the rear. So, that would solve the issue of the front yard setback. We now have the rear yard setback. Unfortunately, you know, the goal was to get an approval tonight, and it seems like we could do that with, you know, our compromise, moving it into the setback. I don't know if that's possible, that's something the city could do, with a condition of approval saying, we'll move the structure 15 feet further back. And then, we'd be able to lower the structure two feet, the pad would be able to go two feet lower. Unfortunately, I couldn't get that extra foot that I had recommended, it just, the grading is a little tight there. So, to make that driveway too sleeper, the access, would be a little difficult. So, I still believe another two-foot reduction in pad, 15 feet further back, I think we will not be able to see that structure, I think, from the neighbor across the street. I really think that's going to be a great solution for them. It is going to take a little bit more finessing in the lot, you know, a little bit more grading. You know, that might fluctuate a little bit, but I think, you know, the owners are really willing to make all the neighbors happy. I think that's what they really want. But, you know, if that means that this has to get held up for a month, they said that's what they want to do. But ultimately, it would be really nice if we could get an approval tonight, if there's some way that we can work that. It sounds like the neighbors would be willing to work with our solution. And if there's any questions?
No, I was just going to say, first off, we really appreciate that they are trying to solve the neighbors' problems. And, you know, unfortunately, and we could talk about it after we hear from everybody that come up and talk, and maybe we'll have you back up and we'll follow up with this conversation. So, why don't we do that?
Sure.
Let's hear if anybody else has anything to say, and then let's have a...
Okay. Thank you very much.
Do you have...
I have one quick question before, since you're up here. There was discussion this morning of moving the barn towards the rear setback, but that would necessitate moving the corral into the front yard setback, basically, you know, flip-flopping them. In my mind, you know, because we get hay delivered and stuff to the barn, that creates an issue with servicing the barn. If you've got the corral down in the front yard, have you thought about how you're going to access the barn? Are you going to have to cut a road below the barn that goes all, or below the, what would be the corral in the front yard setback to get down there? Have you put thought into that and how that would even be plausible?
I would still be, the corral's right now is oversized, you know, the minimum, I think, is 550 or something. We have over a 700-square-foot corral to the rear. So, I think even when we push that into the setback, it will get reduced in size.
I'm not concerned about encroachment in the setback, and I, bigger corrals are better.
Sure.
Horses, that's not the issue. I'm curious, and when that discussion took place this morning, I thought it was a non-starter because accessing the barn, you know, bypassing the corral in the front yard doesn't seem tenable to me.
We could still have it to the rear, we would still have the corral to the rear of the barn.
Oh.
Yeah, I would still, so the corral would also encroach into the rear setback. So, the structure, we could push 15 feet back, the corral would also push back, but we would still stay out of the actual easement that's back there. We would just encroach, we'd still keep it all to the rear. It would just have to get a little bit smaller. And there's still good potential for, there's actually corral space to the front of the, or the ocean-facing portion. So, I think that would, that wouldn't be an issue, we'd be able to access it. Okay, thank you.
I'm David Brown at 4 Hackamore. And what you've heard is that the neighbors all got together and came up with a solution that works for all of us, which is exactly what this body would like to see happen in every case. No one's deliriously happy. Melanie and Perrin have to wait another month. The Balks are going to have a little bit of view obstruction. But, everybody's happy enough and they're in agreement. The only thing they need from, the new item they need from this body is to move into a 50-foot setback that's there for a road that doesn't exist and will never exist. So, we shouldn't let some fiction of that fantasy road interfere with implementing a solution that's satisfactory to all the residents. Thank you.
Who else? Okay, could you come back up? I've got a couple of other questions for you. So, again, really appreciate you and the ownership trying to work with the neighbors to try to resolve this. There's always a desire to try to create the perfect environment, and it never happens.
Sure.
Right? So, the illusion that, you know, they're going to lose a view or whatever, well, I mean, it happens when things get developed. But, I love the fact that you guys are all working together to try to figure it out. So, my question is, you had said that it's going to increase the grading somewhat. And again, our job here is to balance grading and obviously, if you, the more grading you do, you can create anything. So, we need to be careful that we're not solving one problem and creating a bigger problem somewhere else. Right? So, if it's minimal, you know, then it probably isn't that big of an issue. But, we would have to look at that also, do you have to republish it? That we are now asking for a different variance, so we have to do the 30 days?
We might have to renotice.
I think there's some limitations as to us approving it tonight because of notice. I mean, the minute we notice it, and now we move it over this way, we're going to find somebody else who's going to complain on that side.
Sure.
Right, I mean, so, we never make everybody happy.
I would assume that the project could probably be cut on the consent calendar, I would think. For next, I would think that we could be on the consent calendar probably for next month. Would that be a possibility, then just really streamline it? And I think as far as the grading, sorry to answer that, too, is it would be very minimal. I'm thinking like 100, you know, 100 cubic yards, 200 cubic yards at the most. It's not, it's just because I have to cut more into the hillside. So, it's not like thousands or anything like, and it would still be balanced. So, I guess if it can't be made as a condition of approval, then you would just see the new numbers and new application basically next month.
Yeah, I mean, I was hopeful we'd get your approval tonight.
Yeah.
It doesn't look because of the tweaks, and again, because you guys are gracious enough to work with your neighbors to try to come up with a plan that works for everybody. I think we're going to have to...
Right, yeah.
But, you know, I appreciate it, I'm one of five up here, so let me close the public hearing. Unless anybody else has anything else to say before we close the public hearing.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
The only question is, would we, could we potentially get a waiver to not have to construct the silhouette? It's just thousands of dollars of money that doesn't seem to need to be spent if we can still do the notice and not have to do the silhouette. I don't know if that would save us some time and money.
Okay.
That's something you could talk about, I guess, yeah, okay.
And we'll...
Thank you.
Try to work through that. Thank you very much. Because I'm going to close the public portion and let's talk. Sean, you want to start it off?
Sure. So, I love the fact that there's a barn going in. And even more than that, I appreciate the neighbors working together, first to bring it back this month after making significant concessions and compromises, reducing the height, the size, shifting it, et cetera. And I appreciate them working with the neighbors to take it a step further and spending another 30 days to get this project through. We do have to balance the right for people to develop, especially in an equestrian community, building barns with views and other things. Personally, I'm inclined to support the project as it is, but I won't get in the way of neighbors working things out and, you know, working amongst themselves to do the right thing and be good neighbors. I am concerned about the shrinking space for the horses. Let's say, the only, the only ones that lose in this equation are the horses with the smaller and smaller corral turnout pen. But, if they can find a way to make it work, and then, the other thing I'll bring up is that there's discussion about landscaping to protect the privacy of the neighbor on 53 East Field, I think it was. Again, that's going to have to be outside of the easement, which means, you know, easement into the setback. And with the corral turnout over there, again, I would be hesitant about us approving something that comes with a condition for landscaping, because that landscaping's just going to cut more into the space between the barn and the easement. So, I wouldn't be a fan of adding that as a stipulation as we move forward, because I think that space is just too valuable then to, for us to say, and you have to put in vegetation, which then you have to keep the horses away from, or else they'll just eat the vegetation. So, anyhow, I think it's going to be a great project and looking forward to you guys getting it done in a way that works for... getting it done in a way that works for everyone involved.
Yeah.
Greg?
In general, I agree. I think also one, one issue that Commissioner Cardenas brought up, the, on that south side, you do have, they originally had a window and you guys took the window out. So let's point out that you kind of cut the privacy for Dr. Meyer next door. So I think that helped resolve it. You guys did that right there, so that was smart. And in general, I agree. Great idea. Wish all our residents were accommodating and showing up and doing what you guys did. That's a, a great job, I think, in general, and we already went through this, but good job on all of you working together and it makes it easier and for us, too. So thank you.
I completely agree with both the commissioners on everything that was said. Sean, you took the words like right out of my mouth for everything. So thank you and thanks to the applicant and the neighbors also for really working together. It's, I really admire that. In the few years I've been on this planning commission, I think this is like the first time I've really seen a bunch of neighbors come together without us having to ask. Please talk to each other. So you all should be commended.
Yeah, I think it's great that everybody got together to figure out how much or how to position. I just have one question for maybe the team, the group. How much into the 50-foot setback did you ballpark think that you were going to push the building, just ballpark? Or is this something that we'll discuss at the next meeting? We seem to have worked it all out.
Let's, I, I do have one more thing before you open it back up. And, and I would propose that if, if they choose to withdraw the application and resubmit with the changes, then I don't think staking is necessary for, for that move. But again, that's-
Yeah. Yeah, and we'll, we'll get to that in one minute, but, but absolutely. I do not want to open up the public again, but if you could answer her question, I would appreciate that, but I'm not opening it up to the public, so.
We would have a 35-foot setback to the rear. I'm sorry. We would, we'd be pushing the building 15 feet further back, so then this rear setback would end up being about 35 feet instead of 50 feet.
It's right on the boundary right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. So agree with what was said. So the question is, obviously, it has to be renoticed. We've got to redo that. The discussion of flagging it, I agree with you. I, I, I think where it already is located is a good location, so I don't need to see it flagged again because I have a good sense of what it is and there's no reason for them to go through the expense. I mean, they've already lost time and money by, by trying to do this, so I'm in favor of, it's, it's at our discretion. I'm, I'm in favor of waiving that. They, they flagged it twice. We have a good sense of where it is, so.
Agree.
Agree.
Motion for that exception? Okay. I'll make a motion to exercise discretion and not require additional staking or flagging for a change in the plans to be brought back to staff.
Second. Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Yes.
So is this going to be continued to the next?
It is going to be, well, do I make a motion that it gets continued?
Are we, well, my, my question would be, are we, we continue it if we're under the same hearing, but if we're renoticing it, we may not be able to continue it, so I'll leave it to the city attorney to make that.
That's, yeah, yeah, that's correct. Since we'd be renoticing and there'd be a new application number, I think there would be an entirely new, uh, public hearing process.
Do they need a draw?
No, that doesn't make, that doesn't-
We're not going to vote on it, right? That doesn't make sense. I mean, all we, all, all they're doing is moving it.
Did we renotice, what was the change between the last two?
It was just for the variance to approach into the front setback.
But I agree with, but when they brought it two months ago-
Mm-hmm.
And we postponed and moved it to this month, what was the, what was the change required there? We didn't-
We didn't deny it, we just extended it.
It would be the, it would be the same process.
Okay. So I, so we're not-
Minus staking.
Minus.
At your discretion. The same process we went to for this version, which it loosened size, we pushed it back, it went into the wall, minus the staking at your discretion.
Yes.
So we renotice it, minus the staking requirement at the planning commission's discretion.
We're not denying it, we are simply holding it over till next, okay. So having said that.
You could just make a motion to receive and file and just direct staff to renotice for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Make a motion to receive and file and direct staff to notice for the next meeting.
Second. That's very complicated. All right. All in favor? Aye. opposed? Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate you working with your neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing, zoning case number 24-149. This is for Three Outrider Road.
Thank you.
Very thoughtful.
Okay.
This is for zoning case 24-149 for Three Outrider Road. One of each this time, one variance request, one conditional use permit request, and one site plan review. Zoning is RAS1, as noted on the map under the star. The property is located south of Eastfield Road Drive on Outrider on the west side. Again, the zone is RAS1. The net lot area is 38,750, which is slightly less than the one-acre requirement. The first building pad where the house is, is 14,000 square feet, 40. The second pad, which is where the proposed detached garage will go, is 3,800. There is an existing single-family home on the property. We walked past 3,900 square feet with a 513-square-foot attached garage, so two-car garage, 570-foot square foot pool and spa, and 145-square-foot barbecue area. The barbecue pool and spa were approved in 2021. The applications before you tonight are for site plan review, any new construction for the detached garage is 825 square feet. It is a mixed use because there is a workshop and potting area in the garage. The conditional use permit is because the accessory structure of the detached garage is over 200 square feet, 547 for the garage, 243 for the workshop potting area. And the variance is for site disturbance over 40% as stated out in field today. The site is already disturbed over 53%. It's a small narrow, it narrows in the back. It's less than one acre, so they're asking for a little bit more disturbance so that they could build the detached garage, which, as you know, also is, will be attached to an ADU, which staff has already approved administratively per state law. This is the site plan. The existing house, 3,900 square feet. We walked in off of, off, um, we walked up the prop, up the driveway here off of Outrider Road. Existing pool mentioned and spa and the barbecue area. Walk up the driveway, um, past the house, um, to the pad where we were today. The proposed garage is right here. It's detached from the house. That's why it's called a detached house. It is a mixed use. This is the approved ADU. It's for reference only 800 square feet per code. And then in the back, um, the stable corral set aside area for, for, um, 1,000 square The development table in, in brief, for, in the blue are the code requirements, maximums allowed. Uh, the, the project is well under the maximum for structural coverage with deduction 16% 20 allow, 20 max. Flatwork, which includes patios, concrete, 35% max, 16, 13, um, proposed. Total lot coverage, including structures and flatwork, 24%, 35 max allowed. However, the disturbed areas where we're asking for the variance, 40% is the allowance. They're asking for a little bit more to build a detached garage with the ADU. And then, um, the building pad coverage, 30% max, the guideline 21% proposed. Note that, um, grading will be balanced on site, 423 cubic yards cut, 423 cubic yards fill, so it's a total of 46. These are the elevations in black and white. This is the front one, the most important one. The garage where you drive up, two-car garage door. Workshop is right here. If you noted in the floor, sorry, I, excuse me, skipped over the floor plan, sorry about that. Um, the floor plan's kind of small. You drive into the garage, um, separating wall, no, um, no excess from the garage is required per the, uh, mixed-use section of our code. Um, it has to be separated per condominium development because it is a mixed use for noxious fumes and whatnot that may come into the garage or to the work, mixed-use area. So the workshop, you have to exit to the property by an exit door, a man door, as well as the potting area. And the two-car garage, man door's right here. This is the ADU for reference, family room, one-bedroom bath. And then the elevations, two-car garage door, man door, um, for the workshop with a window. And then this is the, um, back, back door or west elevation, which is where, um, the west elevation, this will be the garage, and then the potting area will be on the other side. So the potting area door is right here on the north elevation. The grading, um, plan balanced on site. We did have some public comment, one of the items we got, um, yesterday, but it was also mentioned in your staff report that the RHCA has already reviewed this project and just had, um, concerns about the easement being, or, excuse me, the stable access be placed outside of the easement, which the applicant knows and has already addressed. And it's categorically exempt from CEQA 15303. So staff recommends, planning commission, open the public hearing, take public testimony, close the public hearing, discuss the project, and if the commission is so inclined, draft resolution is available for your approval. Concludes the report. Applicant engineer is here for questions as well as the property owner.
Great.
Just, just to be clear, Catherine was there this morning, but the RHCA concerns have been addressed, is that what?
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Correct. The applicant, um, and it shows a, the applicant highlighted this orange area on the plans as the access for the stable originally, stable area, which was in the easement, the RHCA easement. So the applicant has redesigned it, as mentioned, I believe, out in the field, that the easement, the access go up and around in front of the house, through the prop, through the house, through the property instead of around the property and through the-
And the plans reflect that?
Yes.
It just seems to be prominent. Roof holder and her presence and stuff.
Yeah.
I'm trying to make sure.
And it's, it's, it, it was. I think the applicant left this orange highlight, but did not, but just noted that future stable access is right here instead of future sta, there's an old remnant note. So yes, it has changed the access.
Question for you. The, the current disturbed is 53 and change, and they're disturbing it by another, just under 20. And, and you had indicated today on site that that 20 includes the ADU.
Technically, it does not.
Does not?
So it could actually go up, more up, upwards to, yeah, it does not.
It does?
It does? Okay.
Otherwise, you're 90%.
It does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay. So that helps a little bit. We, we can't control the ADU, so at least it justifies a little bit of it. Okay.
That kind of leads me to my question because it was similar. So can't address the ADU, but we can't address what it does to the disturbed area? Where, where are we limited at all? Nothing on the ADU? The ADU is just added in and there's nothing to, uh-
Correct.
Adhere to whatever our opinions are.
Yeah. Unfortunately, yeah, the ADU is, as long as it meets the checklist in the city's code, then it's either approved or denied.
Sacramento does not want to hear from you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. At this, thank you very much. At this point, tell them I'm going to open it up to the audience. Please come up and state your name.
Microphone.
Dan Bolton, Bolton Engineering, on behalf of the applicant. We're the civil engineer for the project. Appreciate staff's report and their time this morning. Appreciate everybody being out there. Uh, I think the project speaks more or less for itself, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have about what we're proposing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and we will have a discussion amongst the commissioners.
Would you like to start?
I'll, I'll kick it off. For me, it's pretty straightforward. Um, I don't love the total disturbed, but again, we don't control half of what's represented in the, the picture up there and I think it, it's, it fits the, the aspect of it that is in our purview. The, the mixed-use building fits with what's going next to it, so I, you know. I don't take issue with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Agree. It's, is what it is and they, they addressed everything, so I think we're okay, but I'm okay with it.
Yeah, it's a bummer we can't have the project as a whole with all the disturbed and the everything, so that's all I can say. So given all of that, I, I guess I don't have issues either.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with it as it is.
Okay. I think we all feel the same. I'd much rather see a big barn back there than, than, than an ADU and a garage, but other than disturbed, it, it kind of checks all the other boxes, so.
Is there a resolution already drafted for this?
Yes. 25-7.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-07 as presented.
Second. Okay. Do we call on this? Commissioner Cardenas?
Approved.
Commissioner Sue?
Approved.
Commissioner Douglas? Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Chair Chough. Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion items next. Do we have any discussion items? Okay. Schedule of field trips? Do we have any field trips?
Probably.
We have Hackamore coming back.
Yes.
But we don't have to do a field trip because we're not staking it.
No, we're not staking it. It'll be, um, we're looking at Five Ring Bit, Road West.
Okay. So we'll do that at 7:30 on September 16th. Okay. Matters from member of planning commission? Anything, folks?
September 16th.
Okay. Matters from staff?
Nothing, huh?